Order, we have the quorum.
Anita, park. The doors on Canyon are closed, so go and park on the other side.
Oh, thank you very much for letting me know.
Hey, Chris. You want to sit down here?
Do we need new parking passes?
There's not a chair. Sorry?
Do we need new parking pass cards for this year?
Minutes are then first. I think I don't really see any public, assuming you don't want to talk to us, Chris.
No, I love all of you, but in particular.
One minor change to the minutes. If my iPad will cooperate with me, get your page number. It's in the code of conduct. Question. Last line, page five, I think, on the packet. I think that last line should read, "The trustees did not see any reason to make any substantial changes." Says right now, "Did see." Are there any other changes to the minutes? Anything anybody caught? Hey, can we have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, second? And wrestle. I saw it here first. All right, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we have a number of things in the packet tonight and apologies that we managed to get a kind of a few things coming in at different times. One change to the agenda. Kim's legal report didn't make it into the packet, even into the adjusted one. So under number fifteen, adopt the annual administrative resolution. We're going to put that off until the thirtieth, so we all have a chance to look at that and understand what we're doing. It's routine administrative stuff, but we haven't done it before. So we'll put that off for tonight. And otherwise, start with the trustee appointment process. Sylvia, did you want to lead the discussion on this, or do you want me to?
I think I've been getting nosebleeds all day, so I'd rather run away. I would rather maybe have you do it, just in case I need to run away.
No audio.
Can you? I don't think they can hear us, Anita and Sylvia.
Jen, you're muted. It's like.
Oh, okay.
Moody is muted on here.
We are all un- we.
Still can't hear you.
We had this problem with the foundation meeting last week. Yeah, everything fell apart.
Yeah, you're showing that you're unmuted on this side too, Sylvia. We don't know what's going on. Freaks in the system.
Can you hear us? Yeah.
Yeah.
Strange. Okay, well, I guess awkward as it is, maybe use chat for comments or questions. Raise your hand or something and we'll try and if you guys could help and keep an eye on the little pictures. So the trustee appointment process, I think it's relatively straightforward. I can report that the two city council representatives who will be appointed are Taisha Adams and Tina Marquez. They were selected last week and they will be termed Thursday. I haven't heard anything from the county. We know that much. So the things to for us to do tonight in this packet, I assume you've all had a chance to look at it, since you've had it for quite a while, are to decide how we're going to appoint our members to the selection committee. We had suggested a couple of ways. We don't have a recommendation either way. One is to just have the governance committee be as appointed to the selection committee. I would say that in future, when we don't have electeds as part of the process, that probably makes sense. For now, you know, whatever. If you don't want to do that, then we need to have a process to figure out who the two will be, who will be appointed to that. At the council meeting, or in preparation for the council meeting, the city staff made an estimate of about fifteen to twenty hours of work for this. Should be considerably less than last year, so if that's a factor for anyone thinking about doing this. And then I think the other main thing for us is the interview questions. We didn't really change the interview questions from last year or the questions in the application process. I changed one slightly because the interview questions last year only spoke about the items in ballot measure. I added the 2018 master plan to that. But otherwise, we did not change that. So if you guys want to make changes to that, you can. And then the outreach approach. We have here just a summary of the library's partners and collaborators who will be, I think, at the core of the outreach. I think the library will be reaching out about jobs as well as the trustee appointment process at the same time to some of these groups. But this is a starting point for this. So this is all intended as a structure process. Staff will be implementing it. I think our only input, you know, is about the questions in the application process and where we go from that. One thing that came up afterwards that I'll just mention right now. I assume we're going to make the applications public when we receive them. City always does that with the applications for their boards and commissions.
The application period is closed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And then I know the library foundation would like to get access to them, so they're probably So with that, I'll just stop. Yeah, or you guys jumped into it with questions or comments or thoughts.
Do we need to have our two people tonight, or?
Ideally tonight, because we want to finalize on the thirtieth.
Okay.
That is to die for, but we asked we asked the city and the county to get any comments on the packet to us by the twenty-fifth, so we could finalize on the thirtieth. And the schedule that we have, hey, Anita. The schedule that we have proposed, staff would actually start first of February. So I think the sooner our folks are here, the better. No one's really talked about what the process is going to be for getting the people together. I think that's something that we maybe elected schedules. Not sure how that will happen. You have become front and center with this. Anything you're trying to say or?
So we could hear each other, like I could hear Jen and Sylvia, but you all couldn't hear us.
Can you try again and?
Hello?
Connecting. Can we maybe, maybe we log out, log back in and try that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do that. So we're going to close.
Over the cliff.
Oh geez. Memorials.
I would do the New York Highway, I would just like all the little weird. I'd do this in the summer.
So it's going to go.
Just that way.
It should be working together.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, the city, the city is no longer going to print that heard at the.
I think for now.
I have the same one I had.
The recording, is that the recording?
Yeah. Twenty S, twenty twenty.
Okay, three people entered the waiting room.
It's hard. Seven, one request related to the application.
Well, just one second.
Okay. For sure. It's more.
Not officially meeting.
Okay. And I had one legal thing too, that I was trying to say that I couldn't say. You guys couldn't hear me.
Yeah, Eldora on Sunday was amazing. It was twenty-three degrees up there and they had like a foot of snow. Yeah, my friend went up there and she was like, it was twenty degrees warmer.
It was awesome.
And no wind, like no wind, which is like crazy.
Today was cold up there.
Yeah, same friend went up on Monday again and she said it was like negative twenty.
Testing, testing, testing.
Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So we are re-set up, back in session again. Anita, go.
So my comment related to the, what I was looking at, the website posting of the, of the the application, it just reminded me that I really don't like the photo of that features me in the group photo. And I know there's one of me looking straight ahead. This one has me like looking up and, you know, with just like in between some, you know, happy moment, but I'm the only one that looks, but isn't looking at the camera.
Did I take those photos?
No, I don't know who did, but I know I have one that is just of all of us just looking straight ahead.
Me, Anita, and I'll get it posted.
So I put up with it during the other process, but I just don't want it to like continue to be out there like, you know. Anyway, that is just a minor thing. That's why I was, I thought I could say it before the recording started again. But as it related to the application process, what I couldn't hear was you said the questions. That's the point that you were on, related to asking the same, using the same set of questions minus something. And I didn't hear what, what it, what the.
What I said was, we just rolled over the questions from last year without change with one exception. And what the exception was, the question where they asked how we were going to meet the ballot measures. I added the 2018 ten-year master plan as well. So that's the only change. I assumed that interview questions might be something that people wanted to put in, and I think we just made a decision not really to change that. You know, Sylvia, can you, you want to speak there?
Oh, and the other, so there are two sets of questions. There's the initial application set of questions, which is, I think, what Johnny's referring to now. And then there are the interview questions when someone is deemed worthy of an interview. And in that packet, there, there is an additional question as well regarding conflicts of interest. And that was because of requirements in our bylaws.
So pages nine and ten are the two pages that have the questions. Page sixteen slash nine has the questions that were in the application slot here. And then page seventeen slash ten are the questions that are the interview. And this is not something you need to necessarily propose changes to tonight. I mean, part of the reason we gave this tonight was so people had a chance to look at it and we could send in thoughts and questions. And then on the thirtieth, we can have a compilation of everything everyone has sent in and work on that.
I just, just a note is that I remember going through the, when they were putting together these questions from last time and, and the interview was pretty short. It was like, we have like twenty minutes, twenty minutes, but you had two minutes to respond to five questions each or something. So like.
This question has like a suggested time or something like that. So, you know.
I think that just when you're, if you're suggesting things, just remember like, if we have twenty questions, I guess, they probably wouldn't only get to like two or three, five, maybe. So.
Yeah, the actual process, we did not make any proposal for, because we assumed the selection committee would want to figure that out. I would think they could streamline it this year. One versus.
Yeah.
Last year, what drove that timing was they had five applicants and they had thirty-five applications. And they went through, the electors went through a process of saying, how do we winnow it down to how many? And they came up with some internal scoring process, ended up with twelve people. And then the amount of time that they had available was so limited, there were only two slots they had for two hours each that the electors could meet at the same time. And so that is what actually drove the twenty minutes, two minutes. I don't know if that will be a factor this year. And again, I think we thought, you know, we'd just stay out of that because that's likely to be something that the electors have more input than we do. But, you know, if you're something we consider the passive forward.
Our, we're not the two on the selection committee. The other trustees points of contact with this will be, we can look at the applications, they're public. And then will the two members of the selection committee facilitate a discussion with us on their recommendations at some meeting before the appointment process? Or what will be our input points as trustees who aren't on that subcommittee?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know that we have it in this process because we are just at-large members. You know, we're not actually selecting them. I mean, Kim, I don't know if you have any suggestions.
It wouldn't hurt to get everybody's input because somebody may have a particular interest in one person. But ultimately, your role is just ex officio.
So all applicants, all applicants will be going forward to be interviewed by the selection committee?
We have no idea.
But we're, but we're not, we're not prioritizing or or making any suggestions related to the applicants that get interviewed.
No.
Right.
Not at this point.
And that wasn't what I was asking, really.
I know. I was asking.
The selection committee has, the two members have come up with identified candidate. They think they want to advocate for both the other trustees be able to, you know, discuss that with them and offer questions and ideas, knowing that we don't have a vote.
So I'm just looking at the schedule. So we had.
Can I back up? Because I'm hearing your question and the two members who are on this committee are not winnowing down the candidate or having a preference of candidates.
But presumably, it will be giving input.
Yeah.
Committee, that's why they're there. I think that's, if the two who are on there can carry a broader message.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the board of trustees really feels, like we reached consensus around the added X or something like that. And so if we're going to say that, we might have a discussion or some kind of process.
You know, the only thing that.
Or maybe we don't, but I'm just asking.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I'm just thinking out loud. I'm not sure exactly how that would happen. I mean, there'll be a review of applications. Selection committee will figure out who they want to interview and then do the interviews. Would it be after the interview process that we would try to provide some input? I'm just looking at the timeline here.
Well, will the selection committee members from this board be reporting back to us at some point on the process?
Yeah.
Like we have X number of candidates, we're going to interview X, you know, Y of those. Like, it seems like that would make sense that they would tell us like how this is all happening and then that might be the opportunity to weigh in if we all had any input on anybody.
I don't know. I would assume that once the applications are in, we would probably the two members would review those and give some recommendation about who the, who they think would be one to interview. Like, let's say candidate X, Y, and Z have strong relationships with the library. And they might say that to the, these are the people we would, you know, we have relationships with and we think would be good board members. And then I believe this, my guess would be the city would come back or the selection committee would say, David might also give their input on who they thought, and then you might interview that group of whatever, six, seven, eight people. And then and then, and then you could say, you know, that, and then, and then they would make a vote. I don't know. After, after the interviews, I don't know how much, you know, more input we would have.
Yeah, I suggest.
Yeah, please.
I am, I appreciate it, and I don't have a way. But I would caution you to have a public meeting where you endorse a candidate or two in the event that maybe they aren't even interviewed or a candidate you disqualified, actually is going to be your colleague in a month. That may be an uncomfortable situation, but you decide how you want to do it. I think best ways perhaps, and maybe the way it works with city council. I know it works this way with city council. Individual members talk to individual members. So you individually could talk to individual members of the selection committee and say like, hey, I think this person is awesome. Make sure you get it or whatever. I don't know. But as a body, I think you are a governing body. It would be, and have no control over this process. So awkward spot to be in, but it's, it could be that you're suggesting it as power play. So the board in Adamson gets behind a candidate. That's definitely a power play, which I don't know that the city and the county necessarily appreciate.
I, I just, I just want to make sure the other five trustees have some kind of opportunity to weigh if they choose to.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, Sylvia, go ahead. Yeah, speak.
Oh, no. I, I think one other piece we have to sort out is, like, are we creating a special subcommittee to work with the selection committee? Or are we, I think what we, I think what we might have in the current draft bylaws is that for the moment that is like in the governance subcommittee, like purview. And I think that's kind of a regular thing that a lot of our entities do, but that doesn't mean that we have to, you know, follow along with that. So I think that's another question that we're going to have to sort out in this process.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. And it does relate to committees because I, I mean, other boards have served on it. It's a nominating committee, not a governance committee that, you know, sort of handles that parent feeding of possible candidates and, you know, sort of creates a pipeline of engagement for that. So I'd get concerned about it being too weighted on any subcommittee of the board. But I was thinking about just what is it like if it is just a neutral role that we have and not weighing in, just given, you know, our early formation and that we don't want to create enemies and, you know, some bad history or reflection of our support of a candidate that doesn't get it through a process and it's all still new. And I think, you know, I don't know. I think that our better play is in making sure that we have strong applicants in the pool so that, you know, there is a great diversity there to choose from. So.
So, so speaking just for myself, I think David's suggestion that folks let whoever are our representatives know if you know someone or think someone is a strong candidate or be a strong candidate, those kind of individual communications would make the most sense. I think no matter who, I would choose will be good about carrying that kind of information. So if everybody is comfortable with that as a way of going forward, I think, is that your need, Sam?
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, I mean, I don't know if such a discussion, given the sensitivity of it qualifies for an executive session. Sort of quasi, but personnel, but not really.
No, not when you're talking about another director, getting a new trustee in.
Yeah, well, then I, I mean, I don't see another way than
Yeah.
Individual conversation.
Okay. So, so that's one piece done. Now let's take a to be the two. So could be an ad hoc committee that we appoint this year. Could be the governance committee, could be, I mean, I'm sorry, who wants to do it? Let's kick that off and see if we can put that to bed fairly quickly.
Just the governance.
Speaking familiarly, if we have to. Not jumping at the opportunity, but, you know, I mean, I certainly have the time since I'm one of the folks who's not working on the board. I don't know about Sylvia.
I would have answered that question the same way you did, Johnny. So, you know, I think if, if it came to it, I would, you know, happily do it. But I think, you know, I'm happy to open that up, I guess.
Yeah. Anyway, well, I'm interested in serving on this committee.
Do you wait to hit? Same answer as you and Sylvia gave.
Interesting. I mean, I'm interested.
Sam and Anita would be fine if they won that.
Yeah, Sam is rolling.
Jen, what about you?
I know. It's work right now.
My other thing. April is probably better than.
Yeah, and March is going to be, I think, going to be heavy. Jen, do something that speaks to you.
I would prefer not to this year, just with things on my plate.
Okay. Well, how about Anita and me then, since I have time?
I mean, I, if, I can also, you know, just.
Yeah, I don't have strong feelings either way. I can do it.
Okay.
I just felt like I got like no real assignment in the other subcommittee, so I thought I better like sign up for something here real soon.
Well, I can, I'll take it. Yeah, I'll take it.
So Doug and Anita, that'd be great. All right, so that candles that.
How did I state? Mark West? Mark West, Mark West. Gina, Mark West. Mark West.
Okay.
We, for, for this committee, do we want to just maybe rotate trustees every year? Does that maybe make sense too? Or like put that in writing somewhere? So just like, it's not always the same trustees, you know, influencing the decision?
I think for now, my recommendation would just be to keep this ad hoc. I mean, we're hoping the electors go away in about three months. You know, and as they get into the process this year, they may see that. I know that there were some who already. So.
They're going to like to do it during an election year.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. So do we need to vote on that, or is it just a nod of the group? Good.
Okay. So I move that Anita and Doug be our representatives to the selection committee.
Second that.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Righty. So anything else on this process? Some people who have comments about applicants? Some people who have comments about applicants, and even though people who want to recruit applicants or ideas about where there should be outreach, should Sylvia and David know?
It's a really good list, I have to say. This has a great list if we can get to all of them.
Came up with this.
Yeah. So do we, do you want Benita and I to notify the city or will Mr. T, you'll do that, okay? And then they'll just, we'll probably have to meet as a group at least once. Well, they should, they, who, are we going to drive the, we're going to drive the process, right?
My recommendation would be, once you know county commissioner reps or that you guys contact your selection committee members and start the process.
Okay.
Any meetings and that sort of thing. We are definitely trying.
I think if we don't drive it.
Yes.
Seems like a long way away.
You can also let myself and Celia know on, because we will be on the staff side.
Okay.
So we will be posting the applications and collecting them. And then we will do the demographic analysis like we've done in the past.
Yeah.
And forward those to the county. And then I had my calendar to talk to the county administrator today, but I didn't get around to it.
I can always follow up with it because I sent you that email. But, you know, it might be savvy for you guys to contact Tina and say, official next week and say, hey, we're your counterparts.
Right.
You know, you let them know that you need to sit down as a group and figure out the process.
Sorry, if I, this geography have a weight in these, because you, you're the one who's being replaced, right? So your location influence the selection?
I doubt it because Sylvia and I live about half a mile apart.
So it's in the city and out of the city. So the original way that they had discussed hiring criterion was at least two members. I think from two members that would be outside of the city. They can have three. So Johnny will be leaving a city resident, they could put a, appoint an out of city resident with those things, but.
There's more likely.
Yeah, that, that one's worth keeping track of because if, if we do appoint a county, they do appoint a county person, then they're going to, will be maxed out. And we like can't accept any applications from someone from the county next year, next year, right? Isn't that right? Because we wouldn't be able to put them on.
There's, I don't think there is anything formal.
No, yeah, there's no formal rule about that. It's just one criteria.
Okay, I thought I just heard David say up to three, but that maybe.
That was the decision of like the original.
So it was the original, yeah, the group that was telling.
They wanted there to be diversity.
Oh, I see, okay, got it.
But it's not like codified anyway.
No, there's, we have no great.
I think it's strive to make sure there's representatives across.
Two reflects the proportion, like city to county. So that's where generally they were sitting. Anything else on this trustee packet for tonight? If you have comments and interview questions for the packet, now send those to Sylvia or me and we will compile those and take it from you. Now, do we, um, so back to the agenda then, just a question here. Amy is here to initiate us into the mysteries of Microsoft 360. Those of us who have not used Microsoft Outlook in like 20 years. Can we do that now so she doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting? Yeah.
Great.
Well, I'm here to answer any questions. Before we dive into the questions, I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable and understands what rules you have available to you now. Okay.
So I have no idea.
Okay.
Oh, we got an email that said, we got an email that said, I'm into office.com. That's what I got, so I don't know.
Right, show of hands, who uses Office in your personal or professional realm? Okay, we've got two.
House, I, I have it in the bag.
Okay.
I don't understand how to use it and I've used it for 15 years or whatever.
It was just, it was just the issue of the subscription, because the subscription I have through, you know, the organization I work for, I don't have it personally. And so I was trying to figure out, is there a subscription of the district that we should be linked with?
Yes. So last week, we got you, you guys all set up with a Microsoft account. Pro license. And what that means is you have the ability to download the full applications onto your devices. So that includes Outlook, SharePoint, Excel, Word, Teams, all of the Microsoft products. You can download the full application onto your personal device, your, whatever device you use for your board meetings. It also means that you have a cloud license. So you can go to office.com, log in with the credentials that Anthony sent you and get to the same information.
Good.
Stop there.
So, so what I'm hearing is we do not have to elude our computers with Office.
We do not.
We can keep it in the cloud.
We can keep it in the cloud. But we are asking that you, we're going to stop using Gmail and we're going to move you into Microsoft. And I can talk more about that after questions.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I have all that Microsoft stuff on this computer from previous employer and it stopped working, obviously. But now will it work again or do we have to reinstall all that crap?
It should work.
Okay.
We can talk offline because there are, like, there's a specific teams we want you to use. It's a, it's the work school account. Um, but you should be able to just log in and it should recognize you as a district employee and pull up. It may ask for updates.
Okay, so I tried to log in with the user and password that Anthony sent. And it said that that password didn't work.
Okay.
I have the same problem as well.
I have, I have not heard jack from anybody on it, but I'm, perhaps I will at some point.
So I would try the same password that he gave you.
No, I did.
I know.
Multiple times.
We've had trouble with the passwords that are getting assigned. Um, so they've reset them on the backend, but they've reset them as the same password.
Okay.
Give it, give it one more try for me. If you still are not able to log in, I believe you still have Anthony's email and I'm CC'd on those messages. Just respond back, let them know that you have tried once again and that password hasn't worked. Then they'll do some things on the backend.
I have a dumb question. Um, I've been trying to download the things onto my computer and on my phone, but can I do that? He keeps wanting me to do it on my phone.
Uh, no, you should be able to do it on your computer, I would think. I don't know as far as Mac, Mac versus PC, I don't think there's.
Apple's just like.
Apple's phone. And it's, it's wanting you to push it to the Apple phone.
So whenever I click on like, on this, like, I'm like on this screen right now and it says, like, if I want to install the apps, it's a, oh, maybe.
If you go to the App Store.
Remind I figured.
Could probably.
I think most importantly is, once I, I'll probably get to this next week. Can I schedule or can I call the Anthony or?
Yes.
It just, he could probably help me.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Or comment or something or, you know, schedule a time to come in.
You could, you're welcome to come in and talk to one of my staff members. If we can't assist you, then we can call Anthony on the spot and get assistance that way. Whatever works for you. If you want to use us as a conduit, that's perfectly fine. We're happy to work with you.
Okay.
Um, now regarding what you have in your Gmail, um, the archive, Focus Connect is going to migrate that. You'll be getting an email from Jackie, she's the CEO of Focus Connect. She's going to be welcoming you and explaining that we're going to be migrating all of the data out of your Gmail and into your district Outlook. I would say that, um, Microsoft has changed a lot since many of you have used it. I would say Teams is pretty fantastic. Um, I'm a big fan of Teams and OneNote. Uh, you guys can create little chat groups amongst yourselves in Teams. Uh, there's lots of things you can do if you.
You can't do that, but yes.
Oh, you can't. Okay, okay. All right.
You already do a little too much of that email.
Uh, it's a great place to, to save files. Uh, you can create a SharePoint page and, and save files and that's backed up automatically. Uh, it does mean that you guys will have to participate in some complacency training that all staff have to go through. Uh, it's just because, um, those bad people are getting smarter and smarter and they're, uh, finding new ways to trick us in, in emails. And so in order to be compliant, we want to make sure that everybody is properly trained on how to spot a phishing email and, and whatnot. So everybody will have to go through a 20 minute training. Um, that's just part of the gig, being part of the district and having a district account. Yeah, that's, that's kind of my spiel.
So question, beyond email, is there anything we have to use?
No. I would suggest that you use, uh, OneDrive or SharePoint as your archive for documents.
If, we are, we are very limited in what we can do with a shared document as a board. Um, I mean, the one thing that we do need to put up there is if we can migrate the, um, agenda, the rolling agenda we have right now, that's just in a Google Drive folder and that should be in SharePoint. But that's a public document.
Okay.
But anything we put up there has to be public and I think that's the increases within your.
What, what do you have in your archive then that needs to be brought over? Is it just emails?
Just emails.
Oh, okay. All right.
In terms of the networks, um, Wi-Fi themselves, I mean, are we still a guest? We're no, are we not?
I will provide you guys with the password before I leave today.
Okay.
Uh, you guys will be on the BPLD staff.
Not private?
Correct, private is for our tenants like Chris.
As far as migrating the emails from Gmail to the accounts, uh, six of you set up, uh, Gmail BLD accounts. One of you did not. Is it necessary for all seven of you to transfer all of your emails that you sent? Or can we not ask the one person who chose to use their private email address, not have to expose their entire?
Who is that?
Oh.
To.
Yeah. Well, it's good, but I guess migrating everybody else's emails should migrate anything you did that was relevant to the.
Yeah. You're going to get every email that came that was brought up.
Yeah, should be fine.
Moving on to the LDO, it's my main, like, personal email.
So we set a deadline, like, we'll move to the new system by February 1st or something. Everybody will move to their, start using their, well, whenever you can, but at least by February 1st, is that? Was that?
Well, I think, I think that's what you're saying is, is use that for communication, not the migration, right?
Yeah, the move to the, like, have everybody get their stuff set up by, I don't know, we could say the end of next week or something, but whatever. When do you want us to move over to that?
Um, it'd be great if you could just move it over as soon as pot, like, move your communication over.
Okay.
The migration will happen a little bit later, but as far as how you communicate with each other, the sooner you can start that and abandon the Gmail, then the better.
So can we set up folders in Outlook the same way we can in Gmail?
Uh, yes.
Because I would need to set up the same folder structure in order to do that. I mean, this is going to be even more complicated because right now I'm getting my very district emails in three emails.
And that's another thing is, um, I, we do ask that you forward, um, from your Gmail to your Outlook. If you need help with that, we can certainly help you, um, forward any communication you get into your district Gmail to your new district Outlook account.
Have our emails been changed on the webpage yet?
That's a great question. I'll look into that.
We can probably change it. Um, also put like an automatic reply on your Gmail so that if somebody emails your old thing, it'll be like, please, I'm no longer using this, go use this other email.
Probably not, but I guess.
Yeah.
Actually, Johnny, I think I went and looked last week, I couldn't find your emails on the page.
I have a completely blank.
Isn't there a group?
It's a trustees.
Yeah, it's probably a distribution group that
Yeah.
was created on the backend, which we can also do, we can create distribution groups. And so you don't have to remember everybody's email, you just write in BPL trustee, BPLD trustees or whatever, and it generates everybody's email.
Well, right now, that, right now, the group email we have, as I understand it, is also public. It goes to staff and so if we create, we just have to be very clear that we know when we are sending something that's going public and when we're doing something that's internal.
The group email goes to Celia, myself.
Okay.
And Jennifer gets it as well and we're going to add. Yeah.
Okay. You can customize it however you want.
Can my library email, can I get a heads up in my Gmail that I got an email from that? So I know to check it or send it forward or is that?
So you can set up your Gmail to forward to your Outlook, uh, which would. Um, yes, yeah, you can do the reverse. You can set up a rule to forward it to your Gmail as well.
Great.
So I would maybe suggest that you guys set up a protocol for us as to how you want us to do that. Because otherwise we'll be doing it in lots of creative ways.
I need to, I need to sit down with you and find out that, what you can and cannot do.
You can put like that Outlook app on your phone too, so that you just get like push notifications.
And for me. I mean, the underpinning of this, when I asked about migrating things, is that I think our emails are subject to open records now. So it's a question about, you know, how do we then save these records and for what? And so we're in a different kind of place than you guys, I think, in respect to that.
So that's a great question. I don't know if you have different retention policies than what staff would have. So I'll get with you guys. Today.
Jennifer has that queued up, Jennifer and Margo have that queued up in the policy development at some point. I don't know what time, but the, the task is to work with, um, Seder Vanderwall to create those record policies and retroretention schedules.
Okay, great.
Sooner rather than later, but I don't know where that falls in the main priority of. And I think I would like to, at some point, to sit down and talk with you because, yeah, going back to Microsoft just gives me a giant headaches.
Largest company in the world. It is, I think, better than it used to be.
Is it?
Yeah, pretty good, yeah. I'm told, I, I talked to a lot of.
I mean, I started with WordPerfect, so.
And we have a, a better license now. Uh, it's a little, it offers more features than the license we had when we were a city department. Um, so, yeah, I think most staff appreciate Microsoft, yeah.
So I think we have it. The last thing that we want to ask you, uh, is if you want a, any device of any type. So we would provide you with a device should you choose to have it. Something to think about, not tell us tonight, but if you want a tablet or an iPad or something or other that you could have only library stuff on, that's a reasonable expectation, uh, of us and we would provide. Just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just going to go into the assumption that it's not working for anybody.
It's working fine for me. I just downloaded the, the Microsoft app, um, on my Mac and it's working okay. So.
Okay.
Low priority list.
Okay, sounds great.
And I'm in on the cloud.
Yep, and that's perfectly fine.
So I'm not, I don't have any immediate issues that way.
Great.
We have a million things if we want to.
Yeah.
Shuster.
I'll be one of the best discussions we've had over the day.
We, uh, we onboarded all of our staff in four days. And so we've had a lot of these conversations. Uh, this is a good time to hit us up because it's fresh in our memories on, sort all this out. Great. Okay.
Thank you. To our previously scheduled program. Um, so the agenda, uh, number six is just establish dates of regular board meetings. Uh, we actually talked about this back in December, we looked at the rolling long-term agenda. And it's, Jen suggested we put in Google Drive, which we have, good suggestion. So if everybody's okay with that, um, if that can meet our needs for adopting those, do we have to take a formal action on that? And of course, there's a subject change to as we go. Um, and in that vein, do you have a date for the week? David?
The only date that didn't have any, uh, uh, no conflicts was March 2nd.
Okay.
And that's the same March 2nd, yeah.
So good.
And that is the weekend of BF, yes.
I, I, I look, anybody has a direct conflict, the Builder International Fund Fest.
Oh, okay. Well, we won't be, we're gonna be eight hours, six hours with, with the.
It's topside, I want, I'm gonna bring that up and buy everything to think about when I get to my.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Dates, I don't know if you could, I found it.
It was the second, third, ninth and tenth, so there was only one person with a conflict on the night and uh, and then one person who indicated Sundays was that question. And so that left just a second.
But ninth is now the Dem Caucus.
So it's on the running anyway. Sylvia, do you, oh, that was that a question, Jen, or just a heads up, okay. Sylvia, do you want to walk us through the ethics affirmation and conflict of interest forms?
Sure, let me just find them. So we were looking at what other uh, library districts were doing and looking at um, some of the bylaws differences that are out there. And we, um, Johnny and I really talked about um, you know, we do have ethical.
Library equals an environment. Please complete your library business in the next ability. Thank you.
Pitch thirty-four is conflicts of interest, thirty-four.
La biblioteca se cerrará en cinco minutos. Jennifer was concluding her sus actividades en el edificio. Gracias.
So a number of items that are in the affirmation are basically just repeating what are in the ethics section of the bylaws, they're not actually that new, but it's a nice way for us to revisit that every year, to just remember what our ethical obligations are, so there's nothing really, um, I mean, nothing really um, too, too big of a change in that section. And then the conflicts of interest, again, we would also require in the updated bylaws that every year we would just uh, fill out this form to just notify uh, the board if there are any potential conflicts or actual conflicts. And then this form could also be used if, for example, someone needs to disclose that there is a conflict of interest that exists during the course of the year, just to notify us that, you know, they need to remove themselves from, from a matter. Um, so this is just a way of sort of formalizing um, the requirements that we've already kind of put on ourselves. Questions?
And we take some of this language from boilerplate other, other districts?
That's second, is our form, somewhere we use all over.
Yeah, and the, but the affirmation form is also, like I said, some of that language is just repeating what is in the bylaws now in the ethics section. So it's boilerplate, but also actually word for word from our bylaws.
I appreciate the, the forward point about respecting the confidential nature of library business. When, uh, but I wonder uh, did we strengthen that in some way, just minding ourselves that executive sessions are confidential unless they're subject to specific disclosure. Um, I just remember when I joined the school board, I, I signed a specific affidavit or oath about that.
Executive session.
And, and so I just, I just want to make sure we're reminding ourselves and any new trustees on that particular point. It is called out here and it's called out elsewhere too, but I don't know, I just.
We could certainly add something or do another form and then including that also the uh, library privacy law, user privacy law. Another big one.
We could do that.
Trying by that way.
Okay. Make a separate form would be the way to go with that or drop it into this one? I'll let you, you can figure that out.
I, I'm sorry, are you talking to me or?
Kim was saying it could be a separate one. Um, with also the privacy user thing, does that make sense to you, a separate form?
Either way, I mean, what, you know, as long as we don't have tons and tons of forms that we have to fill out, I'm fine with a third form if, if that seemed, if that made sense to everyone.
That makes sense to me. It sounds like, have you said you have?
Yeah, I can just, I can send something to um, to you guys and we'll do it wherever you want.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So can we, uh, should we set everybody to sign these and return them to us maybe by our next meeting?
Yes, will you send us a clean?
Yeah, to continue, clean copies. The third line from Kim.
Uh, to whom should we return the form? If we could, can we just drop it off at the library if, if it's convenient or would that be okay?
Yeah, sure. Or you could bring it to the next meeting. Great. Okay, next up, um, discussion of board committees and this rolls into the bylaws, um, our um, recommendation, looking at, at other library districts and, and thinking what they have, you think that the subcommittees we set up last year for the most part?
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today and look forward to seeing you again.
Gracias. La biblioteca se cerrará. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy y esperamos verlos nuevamente.
Staffing did wonderful work, um, I think that's set up and running now, so we didn't really see a need to continue that subcommittee. Um, facilities, we have a fabulous facilities manager on board now. Um, when the board gets to things like the gun barrel branch, you may want to set up an ad hoc committee that would work on that, or, you know, if we have to do a renovation with somebody in ad hoc, but a standing facilities committee didn't make a lot of sense to us. Um, the ones that we thought did make sense to continue, at least for now, were the budget and finance committee. They would be working with um, staff to develop the, the um, budget and um, to review, you know, recommendations on finances, they go through, that seemed to us to make sense, especially for a new organization. And then governments, um, since there's, you know, annual things that need to be done, it's af, these ethics affirmations, conflict of interest is to review the director, which we assumed was need, something that's managed by governance, there's a whole list of items that we left that the governance committee didn't do. So our recommendation was to make those two standing committees, and we see that in the bylaws. Um, the board has the ability to create ad hoc committee, the exhumer with a particular mission. We added language to the bylaws that make it clear that committees do not have the only. Um, so that's taken care of and so the ground is also open for new buffs.
So I wondered why we wouldn't consider an executive committee?
Well, primarily because I don't think an executive committee can meet. We have the public.
Let's use, it would be like the officers.
Oh, okay.
So we have three officers, which means it's a public meeting. And the reason for having an executive committee usually is to meet and discuss things privately in between meetings. And when I have worked with library commission, that has been done, we can do it officer, the officers can do two at a time. But having a standing executive committee didn't make a lot of sense because of the public meeting. We're on the, we can see any other districts that previous committees.
If other, other districts did not?
No.
And what other committees do other districts have?
Um, they're, they're almost all ad hoc. So if there are uh, employment issues, they'll form an employment committee, usually bottom line is to stay out of it though. Um, same thing with construction projects, kind of what, what Johnny just said. I don't think um, other than the budget and the audit committees, I don't think any of the districts have any standing committees.
Except, except in those wherein the foundation is a subdivision of a library, I think, yeah, and a foundation committee, but ours is not that.
What about an audit committee?
A lot of them for, they'll either form an audit committee each year, just to meet with the auditors and, or they have a standing one.
Why wouldn't we make that a standing committee? Think about that.
Well, we have a budget and finance.
Yeah, but usually it's separate, usually separate.
So I actually, I asked how council does this and council does do an audit committee. So delegates to the audit committee, meeting with the auditor. And then the audit committee makes a recommendation to the board about whatever they see in the context of the budget, the rest of the board stayed up, stays out of it. That to me didn't seem appropriate for this board since this fiduciary responsibility is our primary thing. Since the auditor plans to meet with everyone individually, having an audit committee, to me at least, didn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Audit committee and other companies would normally also handle investigations, ethics complaints, um, of course, finance stuff, um, I.
I see, like the hospital board, the hospital has an audit committee that is a standing committee that is separate from budget and finance. Some of the same folks might serve on both, but different chairs, different leadership.
No. I think we talked about this previously and I think when we were talking about like the financial test, or not the financial, the um, the IT testing that was going to be occurring, I think that, that sort of prompted discussion about um, the audit committee and I think um, at the time I got the sense that um, that a lot of the stuff that might go to an audit committee on a larger organization is really done more by the staff that we, you know, matters that are delegated to the staff. Um, and then the items that would come before the board, I got the sense that those would be things that we as a board as a whole would want to see those things, but otherwise, um, you know, delegating the work to, to the staff, I, I don't know, that was the sense I got back then, so I don't, I don't know if anybody remembers that.
Yeah, I think, when you go back and think about it, okay, so if we, we created a standing audit committee, what, that's kind of where I was going, what, what would they do? That's different than the bo, body as a whole, the committee as a whole, or as a whole. And right now, that's not fully apparent. But.
Typically, what's gonna happen is your, your auditor is going to meet with your accountant and whoever the bookkeeper is, and they're gonna spot check things. And then July, beginning of July, they will bring to you a draft audit. Um, and then there's a second part where they make recommendations to you as the board, things that should change or things that they noted that could become a problem. Um, and then that comes around to you for final approval by the end of July. So ultimately, you know, that first part in uh, with meeting with the accountant and stuff, you're, you're gonna have any idea. You have no way to help them with that. Um, and then everybody will be part of that finished product and the final draft, so.
I don't know, just given the newness of the district and the, you know, where we're at, I just want more transparency and more, you know, of trusty involvement in the process with an auditor who isn't local and, you know, is new and coming in and, you know, I know they know their role and whatever, but um, I just think there's value in our, in attention well, to these things.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to me, it kind of sounds though, like we're all gonna be involved.
Right.
Right. So like having a subcommittee, there might not be anything specific for a subcommittee to do that. Like, it sounds like we're all going to have to be involved, so even if there is a subcommittee, they're not gonna have a different role necessarily than the other five people on the board. At least this year, I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding that correctly, but that's how I, I'm hearing.
Yeah, Sylvia.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, I, you know, I think that um, I, I would, I would echo what um, Cara just said. Um, in my mind, you know, the transparency would be greater in that if it were coming before the board as opposed to a subcommittee. Um, and then I also feel like, you know, we all take our fiduciary duty really, really seriously, so, you know, having it be done, having those decisions and discussions having occurred during the full board meeting, that to me um, kind of emphasizes that, but also um, you know, maybe because this is gonna be our first year kind of letting this roll out, maybe we look at it again after this year and see, um, you know, what, how did it work out last year, were there things that we could do differently, maybe for the moment, you know, um, let's just see how the year goes and then we can revisit it if we think next year we, we do want an audit committee. Um, you know, maybe that's the opportunity to do it then.
And, and that feels okay to me.
I, 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 I agree, I think that's, that feels a little comfortable, like, I'm not totally convinced we don't need it, but I, I think that we should see how this works. Cause there could be things like policies and stuff that we would delegate first shot to a, a audit committee, but oh, you know, we'll see how, we, we gotta go through all these policies first, so, like, if that's like crazy work, um, you might delegate it to a committee.
Well, again, but the policies are mostly the staff.
But the, yeah, that's what, again, the staff is doing that, so. So it's different than companies.
Cara, Cara is right, so the intent, uh, the auditor you hired after I spoke with him, his intent is to reach out to all of you. Uh, if, if there are any kind of things that you think are signs or signals or things you want to look. He is then gonna follow up with all of you to discuss what things he has found in discovery uh, prior to making it a public meeting, wherein all of those items will be disclosed in a public meeting, uh, hopefully with a plan for how to address them. So it could be two things, right? So you could want an audit committee because it's just too damn much work for everybody and you're thinking like, let's put this on an audit committee, so that you may discover that and it could be that um, uh, it's not really enough or there's not enough to have. I mean, ultimately, then we will also a transition to an IT audit periodically times, so that's one of those things that can be alarming and uh, also feels the need for people to dig into more heavily, but, you know, any problems that we identify, we will, they will be publicly disclosed for anybody in a public meeting, nothing, that's not so, nothing that is a problem, but only be disclosed to any one member of the trustees or myself.
So is it the role of budget and finance to see that we have a finance report on our agenda? Or is it the role of the treasurer to see that we have a finance report on our agenda?
I think we had agreed it was the role of the treasurer once we actually have the ability to do that in a routine way.
Okay. And then the expenses of the uh, that are under the board, like the invoices from our legal counsel and that, when do we see those regularly and when are those shared with us? Is that a role of budget and finance or is it the role of treasurer? Because we only saw the first grouping of those when I asked them.
I think I agreed to attach those to the status reports.
Okay, and are they?
I can certainly do that. Um, the only one that, that would exist would be December or December, which hasn't gone out yet.
So we've only seen one?
You saw a package of.
Yeah.
Last year.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll make a note, we'll just attach them to the status reports. If I do that, there may be some things I'll have to blackout. But do that, it won't be that many unless we all get.
Why would there be things you'd, you'd have to redact?
Attorney-client privilege material.
Litigation.
Things that are between us.
Okay.
There'll be things you know about already, because it would have been something I told you or told the board.
Yeah, not like blacked out for our purposes.
Yeah, not to keep it from you.
All right, I just want to maintain our fiduciary responsibility and the transparency of these things before us and scrutiny that I think can come at any day here from outside of these walls, so I just want us to always be paying attention to these things. And so I understand then the two committees and their roles and why you recommended them, we know, better.
Exactly, and you, it's easy to change the bylaws, so Sylvia's suggestion that, that the audit committee, we look at things. It's easy to change the bylaws, so Sylvia's suggestion that, that the audit committee, we look at things, we look at committees and see if that still makes sense. You know, we thought there was an awful lot still of structure to be set, set up this year. Since our first year of operation, we were operating as a volunteer working board, not a governing board, so there's still quite a bit we have to do. So governance committee made sense to us from that perspective, may not in the future. Um, you know, you guys could sound that as well. So from that, shall we roll into the bylaws? Um, which began on the twenty fourth, this is the paper conference. And the committees are of course reflected in the bylaws, that was one of the obviously a change of, Sylvia, did you wanna call out anything in these, speak to anything in these?
Um, the only thing that's just crossing my mind right now is right now in the committee section, we did have some language in the governance committee description about the selection of new um, trustees. And so I think we'll probably wanna delete that, that part of the, that phrase in the, the paragraph. Um, just thinking about what we've talked about today. But primarily the changes that I think are important are really, again, tied to the ethical responsibilities. So, um, we, um, on page.
Actually, can, can I go back to that? Um, I, I'm not sure I read that language the same way you do. So, um, the facility, right now it says facilitate the trustee recruitment and selection process. Um, to me, that was not the people who were on the selection committee, that was the group on the board who works with staff to put the package together.
Yeah.
So if that's a distinction and that's acceptable, I think it makes sense for that to stay. Because somebody needs to be able to initiate the process, that was my thinking, I mean, you wanna overrule me, that's why. But I don't, certainly I didn't intend that to be saying these would be the people on the selection committee.
Okay.
It's meant to be like a true, like facilitate.
And if there's language to make that clearer, that's, that's fine. So like, everybody's okay with that, I'm sorry, go ahead Sylvia.
Oh, no, I was just gonna kind of walk through, um, just the sections that we, um, updated. So we just added some additional clarification to the ethics section, particularly about, um, accepting gifts. And then we also really wanted to emphasize the, um, support and promoting the values by the library association's library bill of rights, code of ethics, and the public library trustee ethic statement. So, and this is also the section where we reference the two forms that we talked about a little earlier. Um, the affirmation of ethics statement and the conflicts of interest disclosure form. Um, and then we did make the suggestion and about, um, adding a section requiring us all to participate in at least one continuing education activity annually. Um, and Doug had made a, a good, a good, uh, point about how we will finance that, so I think we'll have to talk about that further. And then section nine is just, um, formal, formally saying more about, um, having two trustees appointed to serve as representatives on the foundation board. So not a lot of, not a lot of big changes. The other one I think I'd wanna make sure I pointed out to you was in the duties of officers. Um, it makes sense to have the secretary treasurer be on the budget finance committee, um, when one exists. So this would just formally say that going forward, whoever is the treasurer, secretary treasurer would be one of the members on the budget finance committee.
Sylvia, as I'm looking at the duties of officers, we have additional language for president that does not show up in the draft that we shared with the board.
Okay, um, I think we'll have to, we'll have to pull that out then, I don't remember any others, okay.
And this was just spelling out the president's role and agenda setting and just trying to give a better sort of job description of the job.
If something to the vice president to do. Um, but I just wanted to ask, is it typical in, in library districts that secretary treasurer is one position?
Yes, doesn't have to be, but.
Okay, because I just think they're too, and maybe the treasurer is, is not what I'm thinking of board treasurer is, but they're just very two different roles and functions and I just didn't know why we were taking this.
As the secretary treasurer, I don't, I don't know that I actually do anything as the secretary other than sign the documents as an attest.
That's, that's right.
Right, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, cause, because we have, um, someone else preparing the minutes. Um, we don't really, I mean, the secretary technically doesn't actually, doesn't actually do much right now. So I think it, it wouldn't make sense to, to have two at this time, but I mean, obviously over time if something changes, we might consider it, but we're the moment.
One, what we had actually discussed whether we actually even needed a secretary. And then we could just say something, I love that the secretary is the director, basically, which is what the library commission did. And our question was, do we ever have to have a secretary to attest something or can it be anyone?
Can be anyone, yeah.
So that's something we could do too, is drop the secretary as an officer, we could make the second attesty a vice president or. Grab anyone, so you know, if you guys wanna do that, that's certainly possible.
Well, hearing that, I think so, I think it would, like, modern day description, I mean, because secretary isn't.
Just drop.
Yeah.
Well, I think we wouldn't want the treasurer reviewing and recommending approval.
Well, and does she, I mean, doesn't the president, don't you usually do that?
I think we all do.
Yeah. But I mean, in running a meeting, though, you are asking for the approval of the minutes.
Anyone.
That's all.
Okay, we can do that.
We can move that to the, to the role of the vice president, just scratch secretary. There you go.
So.
That really feels big.
But there's some other language that we might need to add into the presidents.
Yeah, and we had it later, it just got left out of this, so I apologize, I didn't catch that when it came through. Um, so we can send that out as a separate piece if you wanna see it. So should we just, um, eliminate the language, it's currently lacking in our draft and we just revised the red, which is specific to the treasurer.
Well, I had a couple other questions, one, the fifty dollar value thing, so I wanted to.
Okay, we finish this first?
Yeah, well, I used to, before you, yeah, okay, go ahead, I didn't know which one you.
Secretary treasurer.
Okay.
Care of secretary, I mean, it looks to me like we could just eliminate that whole first sentence.
Correct.
And then take secretary out of the second sentence. And then do we need to add a line that says, the library director shall serve as the secretary of the board for purposes of creating the minutes, something to that effect.
Uh, yeah, keeping the minutes and preserving.
Keeping minutes and preserving the record.
That's fine, it would be a separate sentence.
Okay, and then we would add to the vice president, um, the attestation. Do you have some language for what attestation, it's like, you know?
Now, if you look back at the minutes and other documents, I've made a point of making sure everyone of you have signed.
Yeah.
It's just, so your name's out there and, but it doesn't matter.
It doesn't.
It's a trustee.
Yeah, okay, great.
See, then you have, we a trustee, David could do the attestation.
Okay, so we don't need to do that, okay, Benita.
Uh, the fifty dollar, and so I have a question related to that, and then the library foundations section there. So that, the acceptance of gift, so I wondered about the ecopass issue and I had maybe I asked David or maybe I asked Jennifer about it last, last year sometime. Maybe it was in November or something about that because of the renewal of the ecopass or something going on there. But I don't use it, but we had as library, I know why it came up, the library commissioners, we would get ecopass. And I had asked, should I turn this in? Uh, should I do with this? Were, were we all getting ecopasses or, and is that a value?
So it has to be fifty dollars that improperly influence.
Okay.
I would say that, that wouldn't, like, if the, if by virtue of being like government, governing body, we get a city benefit, that wouldn't be like influential.
It's not a gift, I think, it's for third parties who are trying to influence us to give us a gift.
Mm-hmm, not just like anything.
Hopefully you would think slightly more kindly of RTD than you have in the past. Isn't it also like everybody gets? It's not a gift, everybody's getting it.
Do you have a comment or?
Yes, um, I sent the ecopass invites to you all through your boulderlibrary.org email. And it sounds like I'm gonna have to do that again, so if you check your emails um, that Amy talked to you about and you don't find that invite, let me know and I can resend it to you.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not just, it's not just the, sorry, the gift, it's, it has to have an illegitimate purpose to improperly influence you.
And it's also not something you're getting that's different from what other people are getting. Everybody in the district's getting it.
And the city gives that to all, 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 um, boards and commissions.
I understand that, but we're not that.
Yeah.
And so I have this ecopass though, that I probably need to turn in or something like that.
They cancel that.
Or just, okay.
Should cancel it, they really haven't.
I mean, I haven't used it in three years, I haven't used it, but I, you know, so anyway.
Use a physical pass anyway, if you have.
Right. Yeah.
And what if you don't have a smartphone?
Uh, then you can actually get a pass, but in order to do so, you have to go to Denver. But you would have to travel to Denver to pick up that physical pass.
That raises. This is not our problem.
So the section nine, just the way that it reads, two trustees are appointed annually to serve as board representatives. I thought there was some other language that we had related to, I don't know, sort of the role and the relationship that, you know, I've learned about related to the public library foundation and in the board, which I just thought there was something, I thought, and I thought it was like, should or could or will. But this sounds past tense like they are appointed, will be appointed.
Shall be.
I mean, but I didn't know about the shall, because I thought when we had the discussion, we just, we opted out of shall and went with will. And I thought it was up to two, two trustees or something like that, or it was, I don't know, I don't have those notes from that meeting, but I don't know.
It's in the handbook, I think that's what you're remembering, Benita, we had some language in the handbook. So maybe what we need to do is just pull out the handbook and make sure that those two sections are aligned. Um, cause it sounds like there might be some differences.
Okay, and so I have the handbook here. And what we said in there was, oops, no, I lost it. Um, under expectations of trustees, we said, serve as one of the trustees representatives of the foundation. That was all.
But you, maybe you're remembering, Benita, there have been past years of commission.
Yeah, no, and I remember.
They didn't have two people that wanted to do it, and so it was a, it was an up to, and the foundation had agreed to that.
Okay, but, and I think we went from three to two, like at least or up to two or something there, because it's, you know, it seemed out of balance to have more than two.
Well, three gives us the repeating.
They would say no to.
And I know Chris has suggested maintaining to their.
But you don't, I mean, is there something more to say about like the relationship with the Boulder Library Foundation and, you know, like just some, like little preamble or something? Because of the working relationship with the, you know, foundation or, you know, history or, I mean, you all said they're connected at the hip. When I've questioned, you know, why are trustees on this board or what's the role and I never understood it from the commission side. And anyway, it just seems like there should be something more stated, you know, if you're just reading that and like not, you know, trying to connect the two and and I just remember it came up in the conversation I had with Claire, Commissioner Claire Levy about it and and that role, because she asked me what I had learned and I said, I didn't realize that there was such a connection and, you know, I kinda think so. It just seems like there should be something more said here for somebody who doesn't have the background.
Could add something at the end that just says, in order to maintain the, I don't remember what the exact words are, but the inter, interlocking directorate of the two entities. So a five oh one C three foundation or a public entity has to have this, this joint management to some level. So you could just add that wording saying, in order to maintain the, the IRS required interlocking.
Yeah.
Directorate or management.
I think we have something like that in the foundation bylaws that we changed, so.
Did you send that to us?
I'll ask Chris for what it was.
Too bad he left.
Yeah, I know. But too interesting.
Um, that is on page twenty six, the end of, just above article three. Or you wanna walk us through Sylvia?
Um, I think, I, we did change section six to, uh, make uh, the annual meeting aligned with what we're actually doing. And then we've already talked about the committee, so I don't think there's anything other than, um, the annual assessment left in our, in our governance packet.
Okay, so one other question that is in the bylaws, it's in the governance committee and this gets to, um, a separate question. Um, the selection of officers, um, is that going to be a governance committee role? Or is there another process? Um, we put in, put it into governance because often it is governance. I don't think we have a strong recommendation either way, that's something that we need to, um, discuss and decide. And Jen, you had raised this, did you, Jen, did you have some ideas about what a process might be if it's not governance?
No, I mean, I, I know on private company boards, um, they're, you know, they have NOMGOV. Um, and it would be a, a committee that both nominates a slate of folks and then um, you know, puts that, puts that slate forward to the board for the, for the following year. Um, but I don't, I don't have, I just wondered if we were going to have a process, cause it felt a little clunky this year. Just because we had no, we had no history with each other, so, um, but I, I, yeah, that's it, that's all I have for you.
Kim, how do other districts handle this?
It's always clunky. Most of the time, somebody moves the existing slate. If there's one person that's gone from that slate, then they just vote on that one person to. At the, and it's always at the annual meeting.
I've seen, um, boards use a nominating committee, but usually bigger boards and also, um, the president is the one who like sort of calls for nominations and you know, so you reach out to the president, let him know he or she, that you're interested and and then that person brings forward then nominations for a vote at a meeting.
Yeah, that seems reasonable, like you would call for nominations and people could just email you directly. I'd say email you and, and then that would go to the selection committee uh, or the governance committee. And they would hopefully have enough people to be in each position, at least one or two candidates. And then, would, would they just, we'd vote up, you know, if there's two people for secretary or treasurer, we would just take a vote. Uh, maybe, I don't know, how do they do it, public vote or a secret ballot or like a public vote?
So that makes sense to me that the governance committee would like facilitate a process.
Right.
Uh, yeah, like you would say, hey, tell the governance committee if you wanna be on the ballot.
Right.
They would just, at the next, so whatever, at whatever meeting this has to happen at, they would facilitate a process by which we vote if necessary. Or they would say, if you have a slate, you have one of each person and that's it, and so like, that makes sense to me.
But if, but if the president isn't on the governance committee, then that creates a different process, I mean, I just think it should go to the president.
Well, I just, I think it's, what we were saying is like, there'd be a meeting where the president would say, hey, at the next meeting, we're gonna vote on a slate of officers. So tell the governance committee if you wanna be on that slate, right, is that what you were saying? The, the president would sort of be like.
You wanna be on a specific, specific position.
Or, yeah. Right, but like you would, that like the president's role would be just to sort of like kick off that process, but then the government. Right, but like you would, that like the president's role would be just to sort of like kick off that process, but then the governance committee would facilitate the actual vote.
It might have to whip, it might have to whip, so. Well, I mean, I mean whip in the sense that, you know. You know, like who's passed the votes to, to do, to get the different things, so, you know. Might do that privately or. And have those communicate, I don't know, but. In the, in the WHIP, well, I guess that's the same whip, right, so.
So, so, so this year, it's not an issue because the president is not going to be on the slate.
Right, right.
In future years, however, you may have the president who wants to continue in that role. And so having the president be the one whipping feels a little.
No, I think it would be the governance committee, you know, and they would have to, or in this instance. You, you might say, next year we might say, let's have a nominating committee and everybody would. Put their name into the nominating committee if they wanted to do that and.
Or another. A, like we did at the school board is you just send a brief statement to the other members of the board within twenty four hours before the meeting. At which nominations were going to be entertained saying, hey colleagues, I'm interested in this position. And then you might get a few minutes at the board table to make your case again and then you vote. So that, that eliminates any committee vettings. Uh, whatever is fine with me.
That makes, that makes sense to me. Yeah, I think you just, yeah, we, we say, you know, within, you know, whatever, twenty four hours before the meeting, you send an email. But like that's what the city council does, like for mayor pro temp, they.
So, so, so I would recommend a longer period than twenty four hours. Because, I mean, just my experience on library commission, I ended up being president or vice president in and out for most of my four years. Because other people didn't want to do it.
Right.
So you need to know if you don't have people to fill the spots, you know, before twenty four hours. Whatever process you guys want to do is fine, but give yourself some time to make sure you've actually got. You have the time and interest in each position. And then however, you know, then I think your process works.
I think, yeah, and I think there were individual conversations prior to that twenty four hour of this period.
Yeah.
Certainly, but that was the kind of form of way we did it.
So, do, do we just want to, instead of having governance or anybody else and. So April is when we're gonna vote on these things?
So.
So, but maybe like by March fifteenth or something, people would express interest.
April will have our new member? Then why would we not vote with a new member?
I ask that same question, because on the school board, the officers were elected after the new members were sworn in. So I think that's worth some consideration.
Yeah.
But I think there's good arguments for.
If I were joining.
Primary, the primary reasons in my mind, it gives the transition time. Especially if, you know, one of them is going off. I have been in the position of being on a board in my first meeting and having to vote for officers and it always feels incredibly awkward. I don't know these people, I don't know.
That's what we did, yeah.
So, you know, I think that's why we suggested that. Sylvia, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that. And we were back and forth on that and we thought. April, the, the, doing it with the existing crew made sense and then the new person could come in. Start fresh and get the wrong sense of people, Sylvia?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything to add. I, I'm in agreement with what you've just said.
But I think, I mean, somebody coming in for a five year term, you know, who is sort of. Not included in a process that, you know, they're going to be part of the governing board of in the year, doesn't make any sense to me.
I think the difference between this and the school board is that as many as four new people coming in. And so you're really disenfranchising a majority board by electing the officers prior. In this case, it's one new person, so I could go either way.
Yeah. I mean, since the annual meeting, since we weren't appointed until May, it would seem like the annual meeting would be in May. Cause that's one year.
Well, this year, the annual meeting is whenever we want it to be.
I know, but I mean, our, our, your, our term started in May. And so I would advocate for including a new board member in a process.
And you just have different experiences. I mean, you would feel excluded. I would feel terribly uncomfortable being in that position. So it's just two different, you know, two different senses of where you are with the board.
For what it's worth, I don't, I don't think we have a library district that waits for the new board members. And generally, the theory is they don't know anybody, they don't know what the job is, give them time. But again, you don't have to do that.
We looked at bylaws, it seemed like an awful lot of them just came to the gym, their annual meeting in January and had nothing to do with terms.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense to me that especially in a year where we're only changing out one officer. Maybe, although I guess it depends.
And this year, next year would be two or other people could resign.
Yeah.
Don't know.
But I think it does make sense to me that if we're bringing in one new person, maybe that they wouldn't feel that comfortable voting. I know we had to, but we had to.
So should we take a vote on this? We need to. Sort of bring this discussion to a close. We need to vote, we have a nod in the heads, where are we at? Jen, where are you at with this? You haven't said anything yet.
Um, what are we voting on? We're, we're voting on the process to. Elect new officers. I, I don't, I, I mean, I, I don't have a, I don't have a strong opinion about this. I mean, I. Joined the Library Foundation Board and no one wanted to be the secretary, so I volunteered. After the fact, I mean, I, I could go either way. I did think it was a little bit awkward to vote first. People, I didn't know any of you. I did find it awkward to, to vote on that. And that's kind of why I was like, what's this election process gonna be? So. I mean, I'm happy to vote on a process that it sounds like people kind of self nominate. Over a period of time and then we put it to a vote. Is that what we're sort of proposing?
I, I think what we're talking about right now is whether we, if, if we have consensus on doing the annual meeting in April. Which means the existing board elects officers versus waiting for May when we have a new person.
I'm fine with it as proposed.
Sam?
Yeah, I can, I can live with odds proposed. How about the, the idea of January? That's intrigued me because then you don't deal with this question. Person's already come on.
Yeah.
We've gotten familiar.
I mean, we could always. In the next round, maybe after this year's, uh, you could say, the term is gonna be till January. And then start it over in January. Or we could just say, this term only goes till January. And then, yeah, anyway, we could talk about.
Or like you said, just decouple the two concepts.
Right.
Yeah, it's like. I feel like.
And like term from the annual meeting, like make them two separate, or sorry, like officers and the annual meeting. As one concept and term as a separate concept and you don't need them to be related to one another.
Yeah.
Necessarily.
I feel like we put the district in the best position. With a mature leadership group and that, you know. Having a new member, unless the person was already, I guess if they were gonna be renominating. Uh, but, you know, themselves and taking in a new term, you know, as a five year, you know, they, they just reelect, get reappointed. That. I feel like. Doing it before the new member comes in is probably puts the district, then there's continuity. This person doesn't have to stress out about, you know, those kind of dynamics. We're a pointed body, we're not an elected body. So I, I'm okay with it as proposed. We can always change it, but yeah.
And we're gonna have four more chances. This would be my state.
Okay. So we will do some provisions to this bylaw line and send this back out to you. Um, I think we have these actually on the agenda to adopt in February thirteenth, so we have time to. Process these things we've talked about tonight.
The other, we have to, the other issue we have to address was when we should express interest in a position and who we should express the interest to. Or officer. So if someone wants to run, should we just set a date like March fifteenth or something and. Or March seventh or, and say, you know, express your interest to the board. We, do we send it to the entire group or?
Well, I think if you're, if you're doing a brief statement about why you want to do the job, I think it should go to the board.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any need for any kind of win away if that's the case. And then, I guess, thinking out loud, if we as a board see there aren't enough people for the positions. Then. Governance steps in and says, okay, we need to do some arm twisting to try and get somebody to fill whatever position is missing. Does that make sense?
What's, um, what's the date we were planning on having the officer vote on?
I think it's April's, I think it's the regular meeting in April, so it'd be like the sixteenth. April, let's see.
Second Tuesday, April's the second Tuesday.
The ninth, okay.
So, um, yeah, so the fifteenth is also a Friday.
It's fine. That gives us a month, right? Something like that, to April seventeenth at the.
I think April nineteenth.
Oh, nine, yes, almost three weeks.
Send statement of interest, you know, positions.
I don't know, should we beware of the Ides of March?
Exactly.
The process will be, is you could send a statement of intent to, of what you want to be to the entire board. By March fifteenth.
You need to speak to it. Alright, so next Sylvia, we're up to the assessment, the assessment process and board performance. So. Busy holiday season.
The assessment process was something that Johnny and I found as we were looking at what other library districts were doing. Um, just trying to come up with some ways for us to constantly kind of staying diligent about how the board is doing. Um, you know, we wanna, we wanna be the best board that we can be and some of that's gonna involve self-reflection. And so we put together this assessment, which again is from, I think it's from. A library trustee academy that we found that was super helpful, that was recommended by. But the woman at the Colorado State Library, she mentioned it and it's super helpful. So there's second, different categories and I think we would need to decide upon how we just. How we will handle this assessment, like do we pass it out and then we turn it in at a certain point and who do we turn it into? Um, some of it is like personal regarding our own assessment of ourselves as a board member. So we, we really wanted to get your thoughts about how you would like this to work. Um, and when, you know, when might be a good time to do this? I mean, it seems like around annual meeting or April makes sense. But the sections in the assessment are basically about the board as a whole. Um, the board's relationship with the director, more about. Individual trustee performance. So that would be something where, you know, you can kind of think about how the year has gone for you as a board member. And then maybe also the president and, and how the president has performed over the year. And we could structure this where maybe it gets sent to, you know, some sort of company that does an analysis for us and gives us the results. So we can see someone objectively reviewing it. Um, we could really handle it however, however the group wishes.
And I did check with David and he said that employers council would be able to do that for us if we chose to send it to someone objective.
Awesome.
That might be, what are they, I was guessing that's like an extra charge, but probably wouldn't be significant.
So we have full membership.
Okay.
Uh, but then we also contract with several others individually on.
And the other piece that was part of this is we thought it would be helpful to have input from staff on this. But it was sort of a three sixty, if you. And I mean, speaking personally, to me, it would make sense to have an objective outside person, someone who doesn't. Interact with the board, do the compilation and the analysis and think that, because it can be awkward.
I think that's a good idea, because I, I had that question when I was reading it that I couldn't figure out how would it be analyzed.
Yeah, I think, um, I do a lot of engagement survey analysis in, in kind of my work. I think it would be amazing if we could, A, digitize the form. And, and get as much, I think, input, three sixty input, as you say, Johnny. If, if we could have it ready for the annual meeting, that would be incredible because I think it could really drive or annual strategic or whenever, whatever we're calling. That because I think. Having something to let, so, having data to look at around how we're actually performing could really help to drive that conversation, but. Um, I love the idea of employers' council as well.
Yeah.
So I, I think, go ahead Sylvia.
No, one other piece is that we don't really have a scale for what, how the points, you know, how they'll be allotted and what that will mean. And that might be another part that maybe the employers' council could help us with. I mean, we have numbers and we have something to, you know, kind of grade ourselves on. But we don't really have any way of like taking those numbers and, and putting them into a, some sort of way of interpreting that. So that's another piece we'll have to sort through.
Jen, I think I'm on the same page you are in that it would be useful to have this information when we have our strategic planning session. I think that's our retreat rather than the annual meeting. The annual meeting is just sort of a, a form of thing. So I think we're looking at March second as the time that we will want those results and that may be too soon this year.
Could we, I mean, we. I don't know. Sorry, if we wanted to have an unbiased opinion, but I'm just wondering like, I mean, even I could put together a form in Microsoft Office. And distribute it to everybody, you know, and do like a really back of the envelope, here's how we did. You know, I mean, it wouldn't be like a huge PowerPoint, but. I feel like we could answer these twenty questions or however many there are, thirty questions. Uh, between now and. Take me like a, a week or something to just find the time to do this. So I, I don't know. I, I'm happy to, to work on it if we can use the office suite, David. I mean, I know you also have some number crunchers on your team.
I'm happy to digitize, I'm happy to have it digitized. If you want, if you would, if you would offer some help in analysis, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be that complex.
There's like five pages of it, Jen, so it's, it's more than thirty questions.
Okay, I'm looking, sorry, I was just.
Yeah, it's more than thirty questions.
Yeah. And then, I, I mean, I think we, if we could identify who we think. You know, who we think could take this as well or, or a curtailed version of it. Um, that is not on the board. I, I mean, I think the more stakeholders we can get into the analysis, the better. Um, and you know, we'll get, we'll get what we get.
I can't hear you, what?
To the staff. Questions at this point unless it's anonymous, so, I mean, I'm happy to.
I think it would be anonymous to us, I mean, that was the sort of the point of.
I think I know question.
Yeah. David was saying staff isn't comfortable unless it's anonymous and, and I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I don't think.
It's anonymous.
I think it would have to be like staff and trustees and whatever, you know, like there would be stakeholder groups. So, you know, and usually in these kind of analyses, and you probably know this, David and Jennifer. You know, if there's, if the response level is lower than five in any one of those stakeholder groups, we don't report it out separately. Right, so, um, so there's anonymity there, or we could set whatever threshold we want. Um, less than three, less than four, less than five. I mean, think about.
Screwed that up. I'm laughing about it, sorry, sorry, Jen.
No, 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 I mean, think about it, David, if, if we can digitize it, I'm happy to look at the backend and just put together a couple of slides.
Definitely, yep.
And it's also possible that this year, since staff hasn't had a lot to do with us, you know, that it's just us. And then staff comes in next year. I mean, you know, this is, this is an annual requirement, legal requirement. So Jen, I think from my perspective, if you can work with David on this and, and sort of take it the next step. I'm great with that, Sylvia. You know, I, you guys can run with this for as I'm concerned. Sylvia, did you want to be part of that or?
Who's the audience? Who's receiving this?
We are.
We are. And, and anybody else?
Well, it's going to be discussed in a meeting, so it will be public in that way.
No, no, I mean, but in terms of the assessment, so this is just internal seven person survey.
Well, that's what we're, we're talking about maybe bringing in staff as a kind of upward.
Right, but, but separate from staff, like so no city or no other stakeholders. It's, it wasn't really intended to be shared in that way. It was really more for us as a group to just try to work on the board and, you know, consider how the board is doing. I mean, we haven't contemplated that, that additional piece, but it was really mostly intended for us to kind of do self-reflection more than anything.
I don't think we'll have the time this year to, I know, I mean, city would do something like that, but like, we don't have that kind of app or budget, I think. I mean, this, I think for this year, this tiny, this, this survey within our group is probably efficient.
Yeah, we want to know about another, how we do. I'd like to know from our one employee how we're doing. I'd like to know from some staff, not necessarily how we're doing.
Yeah, but the staff pieces, I'm, I'm wondering what, what do you think the cutoff is? Is it, is it the leadership team? Or I guess.
Leadership team.
You can whip together fifteen people or? You don't think?
What were you saying, David? Can you speak up?
The leadership team has had minimal interaction with you. I just don't know that there's anybody.
That's what am I concerned.
To bear this issue.
So.
It would be a foreign mechanism for them. They're not necessarily going to just gravitate. You know, I, I, I was a part of the library that initially developed this sixteen years ago. And it was intended as a, it's exactly like what she just said. It was a self-reflection. So it was the means by which a board tried to evaluate their own work. And it facilitated a candid conversation between them in a private room where they were able to have hard conversations. And that was it. Like, and it grew, it's grown in the past sixteen years. I think every trustee, organ state has applied it. But it's an effective tool, but it started really very innocently as like, it is a mechanism to facilitate a hard conversation about how we do this. And there's never any time. And so that's solely what this is about. And I'm, I'm sure it's not perfect, but.
Well, yeah, how are we doing on that P thirteen, the fun question?
I don't know that you're doing very well.
See that it's fine. So this is all baseline, right?
Let's just start.
Good, Jen.
Sorry, no, I, I think Sam was just saying, like, can we, can we create a baseline with this first one? Or I don't know, I heard the word baseline. Yeah, I'm down with that. I mean, I think just amongst us would be fine. And then we can make a more complex analysis in the future if we think we want to get more feedback in some way.
Us, including David?
Yeah.
You think, Jen? Yeah. Well, then we'll break out. And staff, so we'll just have your answer.
I mean, I feel like also Kim should take it.
Or Jennifer, maybe. Maybe Jen too. I don't know. Do you feel comfortable with Jen taking it or?
I asked her about that, but I, but I don't think we put her on the spot right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I am, I am your employee. I am happy to take it and I think you should ask Kim as well.
Yeah, I think you could do it to that degree. So in terms of timing, then our goal is to have the results by March second, our retreat, right?
Yeah, we'll shoot for that.
Okay. Yeah.
Low that it's not going to be super fancy, but it'll be something.
Fancy is good.
Survey monkey does an easy tally.
So with that, can we leave it with these guys to run it from you? Thank you, Jim, for raising your hand.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great. Okay. I think that's done with the governance stuff. Thank you all for your patience. It's been a long slog to get through this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Considerable.
Yeah, it's a fun holiday. So David, now, Benita, this is something you asked for. This is, you wanted to talk about the board governance budget. And we do have on page forty, a printout of the budget, which shows the running item for the governance budget. So I was kicking over to you guys.
Yeah, so very quickly, we, we had this discussion, I can't remember when, back in, no, October. I think probably approved the budget. You wanted a line called out for Board of Trustees governance. So this line is a predominantly cover for expenses for legal and audit expenses. And we just kind of called out, we, we still, I don't believe, believe your travel and conferences should you choose to attend that would be built. And I don't think that's in this line yet.
Okay.
Because that would just be a, a, a part of the overall budget for staff. Staff and.
Right, and that was there, but we wanted to pull it out into this line.
Yeah, so the one fifty eight.
One fifty eight, six hundred is, includes what?
Legal and near auditing things, so the two things that you hire.
Okay, but eventually, I mean, what we said, and I think was in the other document, was that it included travel and meals.
Yeah, I think we have to, I probably, we have to go back and revisit that number, Jennifer. I, I don't know that, because I don't think we have an idea of what you're going to spend on traveling conferences. It may be nothing, it may be.
But it was like, you know, these meals are meeting meals or meeting.
The meals, the meals would be included in here. Yeah, the one fifty eight, six. So I'm sorry, legal, audit, work dinner. And what it doesn't cover, which could be an expense, but it's your travel time. It's just.
I'd suggest that maybe one of our retreat topics, and hopefully this would be a quick one, would be this continuing education slash conference thing. What do we want to do? You know, we have an obligation to do one continuing education piece. A lot of ways you can do that, do it as a board. Kim said they've got stuff they can give us, the state library has stuff they can give us, CalPond is a way to do that. So if you have a discussion about maybe how you want to do that, there's also the EDI class that, you know, when they, that team came to us, they said we could take, that could help drive the budget.
Yeah.
So maybe if we can make a note to add that to the retreat agenda.
So who's shaping this retreat agenda in the process?
You're going to get to that in Myers' track, and I'll ask you some questions.
Okay.
So typically we budget, we expense to the line item. And if we go over budget, then we adjust the budget amount the next year, increase it or decrease it. So we could certainly charge any travel or conference fees to this line item. And if it goes over the one fifty two or whatever it is, then when we set the budget for next year, we just adjust it accordingly.
So now. Okay, director update.
Very interesting. I was going to talk to you is about your retreat. So it's March second, will be nine to three. I don't have a location yet, but we'll certainly get that beforehand. So one of the things that you had requested was is strategy for the year, how, how strategy. So that will be a component of it, predominantly a lead guy, myself, library team. But one of the questions I had for you is what's around development, right? So do you, would you like, I have spoken to several consultants, just kind of mission around for different stuff. If you would like to have a one or two hour entry on, on something that was solely board, broad board. What makes an effective board? What is a, you know, when is, what are the signs that a board is really working well together? Is that something that you guys have an interest in for the first hour of that day? In which case then I would book a firm to do so. Then, you know, likely we go into some of the strategy and how we'll be doing planning this year. We have begun on the library side, a strategic framework that we'll be sharing with you at that time, that is out all the stuff that's in the ballot promises and how we intend to begin on each one of them this year, not finish each one of them, but begin each one of them this year. Uh, that probably gets us to lunch. Now we have lunch and then after lunch, I was curious as to whether or not that would be a time and how you want to be best utilized that time. So curious from you about, if it's your intention then to continue the strategy discussion. I think, I think I know from what we've talked about thus far, like a lot of your interest in strategy functions around buildings and fixing the things and stuff like that, and that's great. We could have the facilities people there, we could have a more in-depth discussion about how, you know, timelines around some of those things that might work. In, in past, we've seen that commission at least, and in past boards I've been on, they use some of the time in the afternoon to do their business, right? Like, so you guys need to do, you need to iron out the, the kinds of things, the, what, what kind of conferences you may want to go to, what further training you want to go to, how you want to address the, you've kind of already figured those things out with the officers and that kind of stuff. But I, I, I don't, I, I want to know from you kind of loosely, any ideas you might have for the afternoon? And if you're all, as I said, you have a consulting coming in, talking through how effective boards work together, and some of you have a lot of board experience, some of you don't have much, I don't know how you want to. I'm, I'm finding the way we've made notes.
David, one thought is since we're, we're hypothetically going to have the results from this resurvey of self-reflection, we should spend some time on that. And I wonder actually if the consultant would be more useful to us if they saw, they maybe saw a preview of those results and then designed a workshop for us that addresses some of the areas where we could, where we have opportunity for growth or you know, change.
Have an hour?
I think, well, it's up to you. If, if, so one of the, the part I was talking about was solely around.
Okay, I like this idea and I was, I was, I was thinking the same thing, Jen. I, I don't know how much lead time we'd have to get them. And that's not like any of the proposals that they got. Anybody, nobody said like, I'll do a self-evaluation survey and we'll find it out. It was more, you know, I did see some things that were like active ways to communicate with each other, those, those, but I think this would fit in. I'll just have to talk to some of the consultants about it. Survey.
I mean, if it's possible, I think having general discussion that you suggested is not a bad idea. And I, but I think if it's also possible to have something that's like personalized to us, that would actually be great.
I think it has to be tailored to like district boards, not just like nonprofit board, training kind of thing, right?
This doesn't have to be a long piece, but it might be helpful. It's for me to review our timeline for the rest of the year and kind of where we parked items on the agenda. And are we all feeling kind of on the same page with that? What are the things we know? What are the things that, you know, we're anticipating, et cetera? Just a kind of a work plan review, some sort.
Like a cadence.
Yeah.
What's our eighty?
Now that we're past something heavy lifting of the working board, what is it, what does a, a year look like as far as we understand it? For, for the governing board? I don't know, that has to be a terribly long piece of it, but that would be useful to me.
Sounds like that would go along with some of the strategic planning.
Yes, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how to, it would, you know, in most organizations, at least once or twice a year, they do like an org review where we go through all the positions and, you know, and see the pictures of people there. It'd be nice to like see their faces. It's kind of like a PowerPoint, like, hey, this is reading buddies. This is the group that does it. And then they kind of say, okay, next year, the plan is to, we'd, we'd like to add a position here or, you know, move this person to that role. I don't think this is a thing that we would do at the, at the annual retreat, but you know, when we're doing the strategic plan, it might be good just to like bring, just to show us the people, the human beings that are doing. Just like a, a quick org chart for those different sections. You know what I mean? So that.
We will invite the principal people and things from topics that I think you'll find interesting in that.
Right.
But then having photographs and stuff.
Just like their staff too, like what they just helps me conceptualize, you know, what.
Once we, once we hit our stride, right?
Yeah.
Getting our stride is, to be clear, until August.
Right.
So if you've hit stride as a group, then it will be part of the regular presentations that come to you. It's not going to be me twice a month. You're going to see presentations from staff. I think that's
Yeah.
fairly effective. It's a means by which you get direct contact with them and can begin answering questions, asking and answering questions of them. And yeah, you, you've met many of the principal people, but you don't know all the people. So yes, that, that, that relationship will grow, I think, over time.
Will be up.
Um, I think one other thing that might be interesting, and it wouldn't have to be something that would be overly time consuming, maybe like thirty minutes or something. It'd be really nice to kind of have like some sort of overview of like trends and challenges that libraries in general are facing. Not just, you know, specific to like what we're doing in Boulder, but you know, I mean, libraries are really under the microscope right now, so it might be nice to kind of get some, some overview and perspective or, or a report of some kind about that. National.
Friends are.
Interesting. Yeah. And I'm going to be dropping off in about ten minutes, just letting you all know. Okay.
That's six hours. And then they'll probably be leading the day. I'll try to find one that can do some of the initial stuff that we're talking about. And maybe even the trend stuff, but then also tie back in later on in the day. So a bunch of other stuff to report on, please.
No, that I, I mean, I guess it depends on who your consultant is, but I would rather not have a consultant with us all day long.
Maybe I'll crack their stuff into the morning then.
Yeah. I just, I don't know, I think.
So are you saying you would rather, because I was thinking that the self-evaluation part, in my assumption, self-evaluation part would take place right after lunch. So we have some time in the morning talking about the fact plus the kind of strategy, things coming up for the year, trends and challenges. And then we move into more of the self-evaluation and discussion of your timeline that reset. Our agenda.
If I understood you, we wouldn't have a consultant for the strategic planning because that's staff.
Yeah, they wouldn't be there for that.
So we're talking about really the consultant for the middle of the day.
Yeah. Could bring them in for the, like, right before lunch. Does that work, Benita?
So I just heard about available space. The academy too, on Mapleton, they have community space and it was a part of the agreement with the community that there would be community rooms available. And I've heard that not many people have gotten the word out about this space. So that could be, so on Mapleton at fourth, like fourth.
Oh, that new, uh, NEDA's thing?
Yeah. We'll check. That stuff's done?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and people have moved in. Great.
All right, so quick list. Nobos on time, on schedule. We expect to get the building by April first. We, we, there will be some time then to work things through. We don't anticipate the staff will begin there until May first. And so a lot of it's going to be the current staff getting things in place, staging some things. But we're still on target for roughly, you know, late May, early June opening. We have not identified a date yet of the grand opening super party, but there will be a grand opening super party with musicians, still flockers and parakeets and speeches and everything you can possibly imagine. So if you're going to be gone in June, let me know kind of when that would be, because, you know, I think it's pretty vital that the board is there. We'll have speeches from all kinds of people. Jobs, we started several people this week and several more starting next week. We posted a additional seven jobs this month. Most of those jobs that we're posting this month are fill-in jobs, backfill jobs, I should say, for the jobs that were. So initially, this initial round was starting to build out the administrative leadership team. The next phase is backfilling jobs that were cut during the pandemics or filling back public service jobs or filling back Building sixty-one jobs or filling back some of those positions. And then the next iteration will come in March, early March, and that is the new wave. That is hiring, the advertising for the no-boat jobs, filling out a. That is hiring, the advertising for the NOBO jobs, filling out a number of other administrative positions, and then a lot of the other new and expanded services will be doing. Those jobs will be running from March through April, and we'll begin bringing those people on, hopefully with a timeframe to start in June. Like I said, the staff has begun working through a strategic roadmap, we'll bring that forward to you guys at the retreat. That strategic roadmap kind of goes back to the ballot promises, so it's defining the work that needs to happen and hopefully the dates that will happen within it to for spring, just for your reference, it's a busy year, right? I need, I need everybody to understand that, and there are things that will be happening. The, the big, big milestone, the first kick, really big kick, and we small things along the way. Cafe, roll out of the literacy and strategic plan of hiring, all these things are going to happen, but NOBO, right? So NOBO is roughly, you guys have heard me mention several times, that you found out about IT wasn't going to do anything for us on August 8th, and then December 23rd, that was 135 days. So NOBO opens sensibly in 137. So it just, just for time reference, like everything is on like a crack schedule, a crack, break your back kind of schedule. And so, and there are many things that are happening before that, and many things that happened subsequent to NOBO opening. But NOBO is kind of that middle of the year where a lot of stuff really starts to happen. I think probably where the public will begin to really take note of the fact that, oh my God, a lot of things are really happening at the library. But there are a whole host of things that are going to be happening in the course of the year. Yeah, um, so.
Anything we can do to take that.
We'll hire somebody to do it, be doing some stuff on NOBO, but if you would like to play any role, let me know and let me know availability and.
Okay, yeah, I just don't, I, I know you're working very hard and the staff is working very hard and we're a governing board, but like just know that we want to help and take weight off of anybody that we can't.
And I'm sure that, I'm sure that they will have roles for you all, and also like the more speeches and the more people you can bring to that party, the better.
Oh, you're talking about the party specifically, okay. I'm also just saying more broadly, there's, yeah, sure.
Yeah, furniture orders, furniture orders have been placed, you have more furniture orders to be placed. We're figuring out how to stage books, how to stage the move, like I'm, my belief is that, and I should never say this publicly, but I will anyway, because everybody told me no. But we, we get some of the famous runners and stuff in Boulder, and we run like a relay race delivering books to the new library. My staff said no. Then I set a human chain.
They said no.
I said, what about famous bicycle riders?
All these ideas.
Probably hire a mover, probably hire a mover on the last day and just.
It's like. On Broadway, that would be very.
Like a.
Like a library triathlon.
Slide overhead, film it all. Great.
Four of books or something, right, or, you know, all of the library books in North.
So you mentioned the roadmap, strategic roadmap, is that something that would be shared like in draft form at our retreat?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll see it then, probably it's the first day. I'll probably see a date before you. We're, we're working on it now, we know the milestones, we're kind of laying out some stuff, and it's a broad library staff, so that we get a sense of where all the overlap occurs, obviously. Between very, you know, between teams that work together all the time, but nevertheless, they are all being driven by different deadlines. We have to make sure it all works out right. We are bringing on a new marketing communications team, which is a team of one at this point, team of two, three, I guess. Celia will be on that team as well. But, um, yeah, and there are high expectations, so there will be some work to do, that will be ready for you by March 3rd. But we will have begun some of the planning around that launch of that major marketing campaign around this is what the district does for you kind of stuff, that's the wrong tagline, but, you know, I mean, so that will be also underway at that point. Was that a? Yeah, so you also mentioned tonight when you see budget reports. So our plan still, and we're on time for it, is the implementation of the finance system. We hope to be having financial reports, you would have your packet by April. So the timeline right now, I think we're still on time, is end of March. So end of March would be about the time we have the entire payroll system, entire finance system set up. And so you would begin to see financial reports in your quarterly or monthly reports, however you want to see them, beginning in April. And, uh, I think, well, so two other things, right? So the final budget, we did get the final assessment from the tax assessor for the year, it's surprisingly, you know, we, I felt like we were just totally guessing back in May, when he said 18.5 million. It turned out to be 18.517 million. So that was like the best I will ever guess as well, ever again. So, yeah, that was good. And we have PLA coming up, so PLA is the Public Library Association Conference, happens every two years. This coming year is in Columbus and Boulder Public Library, proud to say, we were invited to be the host of the major kind of relaxation lounge within PLA, and so we're doing it, and it's our first year. There's so many parts of the puzzle that we haven't really figured out yet, so we use it as part of the staff development budget. We got free membership to go for 10 people, but we're going to be, Jamie Kopp, our team, are going to be building out the, the Relaxation Lounge at PLA, which is the largest conference of public librarians in the country, and so that'll be fun.
Take some pictures.
We will take pictures and we will.
When is that?
It is April 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Yeah, so Jamie said yes, so that's great, that'll be invited, and then we actually have a team of people that are super excited for doing. I think that's the end of my report, there's a lot of fun stuff going on. We got a great report updated this morning of the Canyon Theater project, Island Project, which will launch in July from the team that's working on it, and I, I mean, I think it's the first time some of the staff have really even heard about it. Super exciting, great feedback, it's really, really, so I appreciate all the work that you guys have done, and I know we'll be bringing back that recommendation for you on the 30th. As far as leases too, somebody brought that up earlier tonight, I didn't have it in my original notes, but we will be bringing back to you in two weeks, a matrix for you to begin to discuss or maybe have a decision around a gun barrel location. So that will be presented to you on the 30th of July.
Great, thank you.
So related to the approved budget and that dollar figure that you shared.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you handle that or reconcile that in?
We had to turn in something to the assessor, which we filled out some forms in Kim. So that had to be done last week.
Wednesday.
January 10th.
Yeah, so it's done.
So we did collect 18 and a half in 20, last year.
Eighteen, five, one, seven, and change.
So it was a little bit higher, I think, didn't we say like 17, four or something?
No, we said eighteen, five.
Oh, okay.
We proved the budget saying eighteen, five, so it turned out to be eighteen, five, one, seven.
Okay. Cool.
Yep.
The amount of work you guys are doing is still just dizzying, so.
Wait till you see the, the roadmap, your minds will be blown. My, I wrote out, I, I'm, I fancy writing things in days instead of like a date, and so like the number of days until the cafe opens, like is upon us. There will be things that get done before your next meeting that you probably may notice, and hopefully you will notice in the library, but it's, yeah, it's exciting, it's heady times, a lot of people working really hard, none less than Jennifer and Amy Chum, that's the two that are working on that stuff. Yeah, it's, it's exciting, like the stuff that's, the stuff that's coming down the pike, there's just a lot. And I, I can't wait now that we have a new marketing and communications team, and Maria has a deep interest in the engagement part, like how we build out better models for understanding what the community wants before we actually start promoting stuff. I think that may take us a little while to get there, but, you know, she is a data-driven, community-interested person who I think is going to be really great for us. That's.
Is this like one on our roof?
I've multiple times been campers on our roof, so I will have to have somebody check. It's, yeah. Smooth would be a difficult place for them to be.
You've started buying new books and stuff with the collection budget?
Yeah, they have, and looking forward to hiring an additional collection development library, and that group will be moving. So we are doing that space reconfiguration that you guys planned. I think I see the architect's plans tomorrow, we're hoping that. We're hoping that there's two things, one is a, one's a furniture solution, which means we can begin to implement as soon as the furniture arrives, after we place an order. And the other one would be, you know, there probably are some walls that are going to have to come down, or walls that are going to have to go up. I haven't seen the plan yet, but, but, you know, just so we all set our expectations, right? With the permitting with the city, I got no problems with the way they do it, it just takes a long time. And I don't know if you've ever had to go through it, I have, as a city employee, gone through the permitting process. It doesn't happen faster because you know them. In fact, there may be a higher level of scrutiny, and so I think setting expectations on any kind of major space reconfiguration than furniture solutions, it's reasonable to think that's probably three months longer than whatever the architect tells me tomorrow. At least three months longer.
Okay, great, thank you. So subcommittee updates, we don't really have any subcommittees active right now, so I think we don't have that. Trustee matters, I included this interchange with John Tare because it scared me to see that on the agenda, Tare District. Like, wow, that's, but, yeah. So we're not renaming it, right?
Normally, but when somebody writes to us, it comes in through the email that we all see, and this one didn't, so I wanted to make sure you guys saw that. So it's just an FYI.
Could that be shared with us, like any communication that doesn't come in, like the way that it should, like shared with us in advance?
In advance of what?
In advance, I mean, when it comes in. If it came through your personal email on January 4th, then your response, so I've just only seen the response now, right? But it would have been helpful to just know it in a more timely way.
It's false, yeah. Yeah, normally it doesn't happen, because normally it comes in through the trustee distribution email, and we respond back to that and you all get it. So this one was just a weird one, but yeah, we could send it earlier.
In our documentation, but this should be sent back out through our emails, so it's a part of our record.
Well, it's part of our record because it's in our packet.
No, 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 for public though, like in a part of the Boulder now was Gmail, but it should be a part of the record in our documentation as an organization. It's been, it's your official communication on behalf of the district to him. So beyond this paper copy in a packet, it just seems like it should be a part of our archives.
Well, I think it is part of our archives because it's in our packet, maybe we're.
It was in the packet that was posted online. Okay. It's not just, this isn't, this didn't just come to us, it was in the packet.
Yeah, okay, this is why they included it in the.
So it's on the archives online.
Okay. Okay.
Just for clarity, right? I don't think, I mean, there may be citizens that know each one of you. If they send you an email about the library business, it is not incumbent upon you unless you respond as a district representative, it is not incumbent on you to be in the packet. If you respond as a person or as a friend, they don't even need to know about it. If you respond as a district representative, we should have it in our packet. That's true of everyone, right? We should know about those.
If Ford's responding through our, if someone emails Sam and asks the question, John, John Tare emailed Sam and Sam wanted to reply back on his own, but I think they need to, that, that's already going to be saved. The packet are saved in the archive or whatever of emails.
Right.
I don't think necessarily Sam, he needs to address V that he's going to do that, or, or, or you, but you know, like, I don't know.
Like you said, I think it depends on the posture, right? Like if it's, if my friend wants, has a question about the library districts and I'm texting them about it as a friend. That's different than it's telling out to me as a board of, a member of the board of trustees, and I know that there's some nuance there, but.
But I mean, in our bylaws, though, I was just speaking about that, that that, it references that, you know, if you're responding as an individual, it should be clear about that, but if you're responding as a trustee, and it should be shared with everybody.
Right, and that's what happened here.
Yeah. Yeah. And in this one, I mean, this is clearly a political move, so it seemed to filter it to. Okay, Kim, oh, sorry.
I, I just, I know this is a bad meeting to do it, but during trustee matters, I'm just going to start saying cool stuff that happened to me at the library.
Oh, good.
I'm just going to do that as a matter of practice. I went to a great art opening, the gal, the ramp is a friend of mine who has really interesting photographs, and it was great to see 50 people in the library for that. And then I just go to everybody who planned those district celebrations. I went to the NOBO one with many of you, and it was super fun, even though, you know, it was small. We had some really positive interactions with members of the public, some of them didn't even really know library was there, and others who were super enthusiastic patrons, so we got to top up the full branch, and then it was great. So thanks to everybody who organized that.
That, that was in my notes, but I didn't think.
Oh, I know.
But it's Kathy Lane, so Kathy Lane, you will all get to know eventually over the course of time. When you guys said you wanted a party, I emailed Kathy and said, can we have a party? And she was like, I got it, and I never heard another thing, nobody else was required to do any work. It was, it's, it's Kathy Lane, she did the amazing job, it was, it was awesome at every location, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, at the Meadows, I think my favorite, my favorite one at the Meadows, there was an older woman who came in, was too young, Hispanic woman, and a toddler, and they were bringing him in for his first library card. And the young women clearly were not familiar with libraries, so she was explaining to you how it all worked. And this kid just went into the children's section and was just into everything, was there for an hour. It was very fun, he was right behind where we were sitting, passing out donuts, so we got to interview toys, and it was lots of fun. And there was a lot of that, I think, with people coming in for the first time, it was great. But, all right, Kim, I know we're going to delay the administrative resolution, but we do need to provide the insurance contracts, which were finally, after a lot of back and forth. The holiday.
Bound by Christmas Eve or the day after Christmas. So we just want you to ratify the binding of those, there's copies that were attached to the status report that I handed out tonight, sorry, that did not get in the packet. And there it is. What the total cost was, you remember 118, 118,000, which is great. So great coverage. The only thing still outstanding is the flood insurance.
Flood insurance and cyber insurance, so every single consultant we work with is ready to come back and present to you about the importance of cyber insurance. I have gotten four bids, it's up to you, you said you wanted to delay it, we took it. One question that came up, we had, I had said before the holidays, when you authorized me to do this, was I wouldn't pick up DNO insurance for you? I did, because it came in as part of a package, and it was a screaming cheap deal that was like, is part of the package for a whole other thing. So those are in this. We have not gotten four, we haven't gotten one bid on flood insurance yet, but.
Flood insurance?
Flood insurance.
Yeah. This has all been forwarded to the city, they've had it now for, I think, since about January 1st, and I haven't heard anything back. We did have a contract come back today where I had pushed back against us having to get insurance on the cyber network or on the network. And they removed that from the contract, so there'll be a redraft to that coming back. Yeah, so they're, they're doing insurance things, we'll see, I think this is always. If there's any pushback, if there is, we can always increase it, but if it's necessary.
One substantive change that became kind of harried, now the underbelly in the IGA is originally written, the library had responsibility for the underbelly, but we hadn't really thought about skate park. And the skate park created a big liability piece, so after some back and forth, the IGA was amended so that the city has responsibility for the underbelly. Parks will continue that skate park, and we will not be at least first in line for liability issues with respect to that. That was the last kind of advocate for us.
City Parks Department still in charge.
And the library has the ability to do more routine maintenance, which was something we had wanted to do. So that worked out, but it was a bit of a screw.
I think all we're looking for is a motion to ratify the binding of the insurance coverages that are in your package. That's it.
I'm going to move that, I know the board of trustees ratified the binding of the recommended insurance coverage as set forth in the IMA insurance proposal dated to be effective January 1st, 2024 to January 1st, 2025. Sam seconds, who goes in favor?
Hi.
Sam seconds. Who goes in favor? I, I, Ken, unanimously.
And that's really it for me right now. There is a item there that talks about engaging the auditor, but I think there, didn't we already do that in December?
Yes, he's under contract. Uh, he is, uh, you know, he is talking back. Adriana, I think Jennifer probably too, but I'm not sure where, yeah, because he didn't really begin.
The final thing is, does anybody want to talk about this employment issue that went down? We don't have to, because it surfaced, we wanted to create the opportunity for you to talk about it if you want to have to be in executive session.
So for not to.
Okay.
Could we talk about it if it comes up, if one of us is approached, but not proactively? What, like, would we be able to just reach out to David about it?
Yeah, if one of you is a great approach, just reach out to David and don't respond.
Okay.
We should not. Great. That's simple. Okay. Anything else? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you all.